Then we will have them coming back. And we've been doing the preliminary things to get ready to embark upon another school season for 2021, 2022 school year. We pray and we hope that this will be the best year that we've ever experienced. And despite of anything going on in this world pertaining to COVID-19 restrictions, we're still going to work together. We're going to follow guidelines. And we're going to be about the business of our Father to do good work in this area. And I know I ask you to continue to bless our superintendent, bless our board members, bless all certified and classified staffs. And I pray, Father God, that we'll continue to do things that will be pleasing in your eyesight as we move forward. We praise you, we honor you, and we magnify your holy name. And we're going to continue to be about our Father's business of us. We must actually break the bread of life with love. And we know that love can cover a multitude of sins, whatever it may be. We're going to ask you, Father God, to guide us from this day forward. In Jesus' most precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And Mr. Jarrett is traveling this evening?
Yes, sir.
So we'd like to pray travel mercy on him this evening since he's not with us tonight. Need a motion for adoption of the agenda, please. Mr. Wade. Second floor, thank you. All right, Dr. Leece?
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you, board members, for being here and all of our staff and guests that are here. We've got a lengthy agenda to work through, and so we will begin with the school update. We have Ms. Pam Smith here, who is our Career Academy CEO, and she will give a presentation concerning the Career Academy High School. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Pam Smith. I'm excited to be here and share about our school. And we will start with a video that will give you a good overview and then follow up with some of our data and things that we have going on in our building.
Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy is one of two high schools in the Coffee County school system. We are conveniently located on the Wiregrass, Georgia Technical College campus and within walking distance to South Georgia State College. This opens up a number of opportunities for dual enrollment. Our two largest dual enrollment pathways are welding and healthcare, but there are many other options available, including a new and exciting aviation pathway next year. WRCCA leads the way for Option B graduates in the state of Georgia. Option B is an alternate path to graduation by combining ninth and 10th grade academics with approved technical training to earn a high school diploma. Students can take any technical college classes that are offered at Wiregrass, Georgia Technical College, beginning in 10th grade and 11th grade at South Georgia State College. Technical training provides a hands-on, performance-oriented coursework that enhances skills that are essential to success in today's workforce. This gives students real-world experiences. Flexible schedules are available to accommodate a work or college schedule. Every student is individually scheduled to meet their needs. We have work-based learning opportunities available, which enhance classroom learning by connecting it to the workplace. We offer an individualized and comprehensive approach to learning in a family-like atmosphere. Our student-teacher ratio allows one-on-one guidance and support. Each teacher always strives to make each other better while helping every student succeed. Student success is our top priority here, which is evident in our increased graduation rate of 96.3%. Here at WRCCA, we strive to seek excellence for every student, which prepares them for college, career, and life. Come be a part of the WRCCA family, where everyone belongs.
That was our promotional video this year. As you know, we're the only school in the system that has to recruit students because they do not automatically come to us. So we developed that video this year to get that out to the students coming up in 8th grade and even 9th through 11th. Okay. The first slide, I'd like to talk about work-based learning a minute. We've served 77 students in our work-based learning program this year. So we had a lot of students leaving and going out to work and getting those skills. I want to share for a minute our work-based learning program through the lens of the stakeholder. If you look at the staffmate picture, that is Jalissa Camacho. And when asked to give some comments about her, this is what her employer said. "I can give you several comments about Jalissa, and none of them being an exaggeration. She is the most mature, responsible, professional, and dedicated 17-year-old I have ever met. She is beyond leaps and bounds of what you would expect from a student, going to both high school and college while holding down a full-time job. She solely kept our business going during the quarantine while one of our other employees was out on extended medical leave. I don't believe I've ever heard her complain. I simply cannot say enough good things about her." I could go on and on. She will excel no matter what she does in life. That is what staffmate had to say about our student Jalissa. And good news for us is she is majoring in education. So hopefully she will come back and join our school system with that great work ethic. This picture on the right is our Skills USA team. They went to state and placed second. They were scheduled to go to nationals, but they were not allowed to get to do that due to the pandemic. So that's our school, Skills USA team, which is a wonderful program. I just wanted to share with you a minute our graduation rate through the years. As you can see, our first year, we started off at 51.3%. We went up and down through the years, but in 1819, we hit that 82 mark, and last year, 96.3%. So we are very proud of that, and we look forward to receiving our graduation rate this year, as I feel like it will be high again. And that's our five-year grad rate. We had an 82% in 1819. We did not have a five-year in 1920 because all of our students graduated within the four This is our seniors from this year, and I just want to share a few points of pride about this wonderful group of students. This was our largest graduating class, 70 students. 20 of those students graduated Option B, which means they obtained skills ready to go to work when they graduated from high school. Out of that 70 students, we had nine honor grads, our first valedictorian and salutatorian, both of which received associate degrees in biology from South Georgia State College with honors. We had, out of this group of 70 students, 105 technical college certificates were earned, two associate degrees, and two more associate degrees over the summer. So we are just very proud of this group, and we look forward to seeing what we can do next year with our students. The last thing I'm going to share with you is from another stakeholder. This is from a parent, through the lens of a parent. "I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for all you do. Watching kids walk across the stage last night, smiling at you and your staff, was amazing. Y'all have invited, we have engaged time, energy, and love into the students who are often overlooked. My son is self-confident and knows his work, but so many students lack that skill set. Our community is a better place because of the work you do. I just want you to know that I personally appreciate the job of you and your staff. Those kids last night believed they could take on the world and make a difference because of the skill set instilled in them." So that is just a little bit about our school and why we love it so much. And I just want to thank you for the time, and a great big shout-out to my staff, who's amazing.
I just want to say thank you, Pam, publicly for what you do. I know you poured your heart and soul into that school and made it really an example for the entire state. You know, I was in a meeting last week, Sunday week, and they brought up the fact that there was legislation that was passed this past year that the technical colleges could get into awarding high school diplomas. And my response to that group was that I think it's reminded me very much of what you're doing as a career academy, a standalone high school. And I think other folks are trying to catch up with the work that you're doing there. And so, thank you for what you're doing. The next item on the agenda is the Coffee County 21st Century Community Learning Center Program. And we have Bull Brown here with us tonight to give us an update.
Thank you, Dr. Leece, board. Thank y'all for having me tonight. Just wanted to go over some exciting news that this past year, with our evaluation, it turned out pretty good. And I'm proud of the work that my staff and our kids at the club have done. The first snapshot that you will see, well, before I go into that, a little bit about our, it was a unique year for us. Of course, with the COVID restrictions, the things that we had to do to prepare for COVID, from the hand-sanitary stations to the desk dividers, to the limiting kids into the program to keep the six-foot distance. But we overcome a lot of obstacles, and I think our data shows that we did a pretty good job this year. This is just a snapshot of our objectives. This is, of course, we have 12 objectives that we go by. The very first objective is, it talks about our reading. We said that 60% of our students will either maintain an A or a B average. Of course, the evidence shows that we had 80% of our students maintained an A or a B average. The second one was taught about math. Again, 60%, we had 74% of our kids that attended our program maintained or an A or B average. The next one was math, and it was again 75%. The next three objectives were G-MOT scores. And as you can see, we exceeded in all of our objectives on that, from 63% in English to 86% in math and 85% in science. The next goal, which is part of our objectives, is improving student attendance and behavior. We did not meet objective 22 and 23. I think this is the first time since we've had the 21st Century program that we did not meet it. But the objective clearly states 60% of our students participating who need to improve will demonstrate improvement in behavior. I think this just shows, of course, we didn't meet it or improve in classroom participation. I just think that this just shows the multi-year program retention is a success. We've had these same kids for several years now. This is actually our seventh year, and I think it just shows that we've got something now. And this is actually from teacher surveys, daytime teacher surveys are telling us this. So I think it shows that our kids that started seven years ago, we've got them on the right track. And then, of course, our last two goals, or excuse me, objectives, was family, dealing with family objectives such as having family nights and, of course, making sure our stakeholders and our families like the program. Again, I wanted to highlight some of the, on the snapshots is, of course, 93%. If you look in the top left-hand corner, we had 122, 120 kids enrolled. Now, our numbers are lower this year, of course, due to COVID, but we had an 85 for ADA, average daily attendance. Out of that 120 kids that were enrolled, we had 85 kids average daily attendance. And it's, of course, split up in BGC and George Washington Carver. To the, again, to the top right, it just shows our objectives. It shows that we met all of them except two. The bottom left talks about our school day attendance, because that's part of our grant, making sure our kids are attending school. And 93% of our students were absent, 93% of regular participating students were absent from school, less than 10%. So that just shows you that our kids want to be in the club because they know if they don't go to school, they can't come to the club. So they want to be there. And of course, you see the highest number is our kindergartners, and I know we had several kindergarten classes sent home due to the COVID. So if you look to the right, the academic improvement, again, that just kind of goes back to the very first page, talking about the improvements from last year to this year. Of course, the very first one was reading. Last year, we had 77%. This year, we had 81% of them. Math, we dropped down a little bit. And then, of course, science, we went, we surpassed the 76% from 72% of last year. And this last is basically some of our other spotlights. As you can see, I do want to point out, each year, we have to do surveys in the top right-hand corner, some of the things that, from our teachers to our staff, to our students, to the parents. And as the very first one is from a, excuse me, a teacher survey from the ninth grade. It says that since joining the club, he or she has seen significant increase in participation in his confidence and willing to learn new concepts. The student, another student made a comment, "I'm starting to understand things now that we're at the Boys and Girls Club and in the 21st Century program." And of course, the parent, the bottom thing is, it helps my son build character and provides a safe place for him to do his homework. You know, that's our, one of our main goals is a safe, caring place that these kids can come, get academic support, get enrichment support, and it's safe, and the parents know that. And again, you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, 95% of our parents agree that the 21st Century program is effective, that it's helping their students for their academic Not only do, we do the after-school, but we also just completed our summer program, which is a six-week summer program. We had a lot of fun things going on, a lot of field trips, educational field trips, and even brought in some new stuff for our kids to experience. We did community service. Two of our big community services this year was, we challenged the kids. We packed 500 little cups and gave it out to all the hospital employees. We also wrote Christmas cards to the patients that missed the park. Some of our individual spotlights of this year, of course, we had Little Jackson Wells. He was a district young author winner at Indian Creek. He's one of ours. We had Sierra Williams from the ninth grade. She won the yearbook contest, or her artworks on the yearbook. Maggie and Molly was spotlighted on the Lester Holt Show for one of the Pataco Grants that we run at the Boys and Girls Club, the Lester Holt Kids Edition. We had seven of our teens this summer complete Joshua's Law and Defensive Driving through the 21st Century program. Their parents did not have to pay a dime. Kids just had to make sure that they were there every day. So seven of our teens completed Joshua's Law and Defensive Driving. And of course, we, was just notified that one of our alumni, Ashton Yates, was appointed to the Ford State Board of Directors. And Kiara Williams, which is the twin to Sierra, was just awarded the Chips Ahoy Grand Prize winner over the summer. Our kids had to, our teens was able to participate in a Chips Ahoy contest and design Chips Ahoy packaging. And we were notified that Kiara was the grand prize winner, so she won an iPad, several different cool gifts. And starting in 2022, her design will be packaged on Chips Ahoy chips. So our Chips Ahoy cookies, excuse me. So we're excited to buy up a bunch of cookies with her design on it. But, you know, we've had an interesting year. I look forward to this upcoming year, and I'm excited about 21st Century and the things that we're doing for our community and our kids. And I appreciate you for allowing it to be here in Coffee County and if you have any questions.
Just great job. And that's amazing. So her artwork is going to be on all of the Chips Ahoy packaging throughout the country.
They're going to run, yes. They're going to run a special packaging for Boys and Girls, and it's going to have her design. If you guys, I didn't bring any pictures, but I try to post a lot on Facebook, on our Boys and Girls Club, Coffee County region, and that, her drawing is on there. And we're excited about that.
That's great. Well, and board members, for those of you who may not realize, Mr. Wade, you're coming on the board, but we serve as the fiscal agent for the Boys and Girls Club, and we applied in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, what has it been, seven or eight years ago, for the 21st Century grant? And so we partnered with the Boys and Girls Club, and we serve as the fiscal agent for the 21st Century grant. So thank you. Great job.
Thanks, y'all.
I couldn't help but think both programs, that your people, y'all have both assembled really strong staffs and been able to keep your staffs, the core of your staffs together over the years, and that just is a great job. So please, share with them our appreciation for what y'all are doing, what they're doing. So, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the previous meetings. Any questions about the minutes? If you want to take a moment to read those? If there's no questions, comments, then we will place those on the consent agenda to regular meetings following this meeting. Financial report. Ms. Yeong could not be here with us this evening. She's out with a health issue that she's dealing with, and so we'll keep her thoughts and prayers, and we'll present the tentative financials. You'll see that the beginning fund balance was $19,349,718 and 10 cents. And the end of month fund equity is $222,239,814. And that's our financial report for this evening. Any questions? Facilities, sir?
We don't see what these plus summary.
She's been out, and she prepares that report. We just didn't have the, we just didn't. So, we do have the, the facilities report, or actually, where's that, the tax, I guess? We'll go to the facilities first. All right. Facilities report. Dr. Banks, you want to give us a report on the facilities?
Yes, the main, I guess, facility report that we have coming, the area of construction going on at the freshman campus. Right now, the cafeteria is basically gutted. You can see some work going on with the pictures there. And due to some of the rain, a lot of the rain that we've had this summer, it actually delayed some of the progress that we should have made at this point. You can change, right there inside the cafeteria, you can see how clean things are, gutted out basically at ground zero right now, basically, to get things updated there. But the flooring in the cafeteria should be installed next week. Painting the restrooms and cafeterias should be complete by the end of next week. And one of, I guess, one of the delays that we have right now is with the epoxy flooring. That, that's a delay. With that going on right now, hopefully by the next seven to 10 days, we hope that that will be installed. The fixtures in B and D wing restrooms, they're going to install those next week, and also install the partitions next week, and hopefully get the epoxy floor going as well. But you can see definitely with the kitchen, that will not be ready during the first day of school. And we have a plan in place for that with the school nutrition program. Things will be bussed over there from the Career Academy, hopefully. The kids will eat their lunches probably the first two weeks of school in the classroom. And that's what we're going to have to go by until we get things in order. And a delay there, and a big concern really in our culture, is many workers are putting in reservations. And that's actually hurting a lot of areas, I guess, with classified staff in our district right now pertaining to school nutrition. So we're going to do the best we can, but going back to some of the construction in the cafeteria and also in the kitchen. The kitchen vent hood, air supply duct was installed today, and actually, the exhaust duct will be installed tomorrow. We also at the freshman campus are putting in new metal doors. And I got word from Mr. Spikes about that today. They're going to be, they're already installing all the classrooms, and the painting will start next week, weather permitted. So that's where we at with some of the constructive things that's going on at the freshman campus. It's going to be very, very close. We only have two and a half weeks before school starts. So we hope and pray that those restrooms will be in place, because actually from BGC and D wings and some of the other areas on that campus, it's actually, need a lot more work to be done before the completion, hopefully by August the 8th, which is that Sunday before school starts on August the 9th. That's where we at right now. So we, we are, we're working on it, working on many things. I checked with the KBS staff. They're going to do, stripping the floors, putting wax on the floors, still working steadily on that. So I anticipate the problem, the school's being cleaned by pre-planning, which is August the 2nd, when all the teachers come back. So we're pushing things right down to the wire with construction and facility updates and facility getting, I guess, getting prepared, I guess, staff getting ready for the upcoming school year. So, but I will say at the freshman campus, many rain delays have stalled and impeded some of the progress that we could have made at this point. Any questions or concerns about anything of that nature? Any questions or concerns about anything of that nature?
So, if, well, permitted, most likely, everything would be done by school, but the cafeteria is possibly a couple of weeks, depending on.
And I'll be safe to say, hopefully, with the cafeteria and busting things over during that transitional period, I would say closer to probably Labor Day weekend with everything being completed. That's our projected goal. We hope to be sooner than that, but no later than that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right. And the next item on the agenda is the tax digest. We've received this document yesterday from county administrator Wesley Vickers. And he and Tracy have been communicating on the tax digest. She put this together based on the information that was provided from the county. And so, you'll see that this is a tentative document, but we wanted to get it in front of the board tonight so that once the county is complete with it, we can advertise. But we wanted to get it in front of the board tonight so that you have a chance to look at it. And keep in mind, this is subject to change slightly. There could be a slight rollback that we could take. They're not finished with the calculations that they performed at the tax office. But when they finish, there may be a slight rollback, or we may just keep the miller drop where it's at. But you'll notice that revenue is strong, and it's a good tax digest. Real good tax digest. So, we will, I will email you, board members, as soon as they get us the final version, and you'll see the final version before we advertise it in the paper. Okay? I don't know if y'all remember a couple of years ago, we did that. And so, but we want to keep it going so that we can go ahead and get the tax digest finished and then start working towards collections. Five-year facility plan. Our five-year facility plan is coming to an end. And in this deal with the State Department of Education, in order to receive entitlement funding through the capital outlay program, we have to have a five-year facility plan. They assign us a consultant, Dr. Leonard McCoy, the former superintendent of Cockwood County, is our consultant, and he works through the Department of Education. Dr. McCoy will work closely with Dr. Banks in preparing the five-year facility plan. They will send a committee, maybe the Georgia Department of Education will send a committee here, and they will review our plan, and then they will approve our plan, and then we will bring it back to you for ultimate approval later this school year. So, this starts off the process, but the Department of Education does require the board to take action approving us working with the Department of Education developing a five-year facility plan. Are there any questions about this? All right. The Coffee Middle School flooring. We have been working towards replacing the flooring at Coffee Middle School in the auditorium. And if you've been in there, the large auditorium that we have, there's original carpet in there, and it has a lot of stains and needs to be replaced. And so, we've got a quote on replacing the auditorium carpeting in there. We'll come back with carpet squares, just like what's in there. And then in the office areas at the middle school, tearing out the carpet and coming back with an LBT product. It's a vinyl product, very similar to what we installed at the high school in the renovations at the high school, also similar to what we installed out at Nichols, in the school at Nichols. So, this is a quote for replacing the auditorium carpeting and then the carpet in the office areas with vinyl tile. So, and we'd like the board to approve this tonight. I know a lot of time on these kind of purchases, we'll present one month and then come back the next month and ask for approval. But we would like the board to approve this tonight so that they can go ahead and take advantage of whatever little bit of time we have left before students come in and try to get as much done as they can before the students start coming back. And then also, we've been told the price is going to go up on some of this flooring if we don't go ahead and purchase. So, the board's pleasure, we'll place this on the consent agenda to be approved at tonight's meeting.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And we talked about doing a solid surface in that big auditorium, but it's so big that the sound.
Oh, I figured there's some sound issues. You'd have to do it in there, but in houses like this, it's not.
Yes, sir. Charles Wilson Field, the fencing in the outfield is rotten. It's a wood fence that's out there, and it's actually dangerous. So, we are asking the board to approve replacing the fencing in the outfield at Charles Wilson Field. And we're going to replace with a vinyl, black vinyl chain link fence. And they'll come back and put a cap at the top of it, the plastic cap that they put on those baseball fields, and it'll look nice once they put it in. So, you've got a quote there. We're going to, we'll ask for approval on this next month. It's not time sensitive. So, we're just going to present that to the board tonight. The next item, are there any questions about Charles Wilson Field? The next item is Go Guardian Software. This is a software package. We piloted it last school year, and we had a large number of staff using the software. They had a free demo and allowed our teachers to use it. The technology department pursued this demo because they thought it might be software that we're interested in. It allows the teachers the ability to be able to see what's on the students' screens when they're in the classroom. So, if I was the teacher, I could pull up and see what's on Adam's screen right now. They can actually even do it while the students are at home doing virtual instruction. So, it gives a level of accountability. If the teacher needs to help, if Dr. Banks was at home working on a lesson and I'm the teacher, I could, I could pull up his screen and I could help him work out a problem and see exactly what's on his screen from home. So, it's a tool that we think would be good for our boys and girls and our teachers. And the feedback we got from our teachers was very positive. So, we're not asking for approval on this. The funding source is going to be the American Recovery Act money, and that has not been approved yet by the feds, by the state. And so, once we have approval from the state to move forward with the purchase, we'll come back and ask for it to purchase this. But we want to go ahead and get it in front of you because we could get approval anytime. And we're hoping by next board meeting, we can move forward with the purchase. Policies. We've got the policies to present to the board tonight that have been sitting on the table. Approval of policy revision, G A R H, employee leads and abstances. This brings us in line with the new regs that have been passed. Other states have been using these regs, and Georgia's finally adopting them, though it deals with maternity leave and paternity leave and adoption and foster parents and such as that. The next item is the approval of policy revision, I V E, competitive interschool artistic activities. This is a result of the Mosley Act that was passed by the legislature that allows homeschool students to participate in high school and middle school athletics. And so, this pertains to homeschool students. And we've not had any queries yet. There's some details to it that parents will need to be aware of. But by adopting this policy, this allows us to implement that without any problems. The next one is approval of policy B C B I, public participation in board meetings. And once again, this is a result of the change in legislation in this past legislative session that becomes law in July. And basically, the change requires, the verbiage in the law requires public participation at the Board of Education meeting each night. And so, previously, our policy read at the work session. So, we're changing our policy to reflect and involve. All right. If there's no questions, those policies will be approved at the meeting following this. M O U for Aero Academy. We've got an M O U that is being executed between the city, the county, Wiregrass Technical College, South Georgia State College, and Coffee County Schools, if you will allow that tonight. And what this will do, this will establish a partnership between those entities with Aero, let me make sure I get their name right, Aero, International Aero Academy out of Lakeland, Florida. We flew down, the mayor flew down, and Dr. Sellers out at the college and a representative from the technical college. We went down back in March to Lakeland and visited their campus in Lakeland, Florida. It's in an airport, actually. And they have a flight school there where they have international students and domestic students that live on their campus there at the airport. And they have a dormitory there, and the students live there, and they do, they do flight training. And they also have an A and P school in which students can enroll through the technical college side and earn an A and P certificate, which is a license to work on airplanes. And so, we're going to partner with the Aero Academy. Pam, you went down to Lakeland. Weren't you down there? All right, you weren't down there.
I had a Zoom meeting, though.
All right, yeah, you were on the Zoom. All right. So, we are going to do the partnership with the Aero Academy. It was Brandon Wilkes that was there. All right. And partnership with the Aero Academy, they have all the FAA licensing that's needed to establish a flight school here and an A and P school here. So, they will establish a satellite campus here in Coffee County at the technical college. And at the technical college, we will, we will implement a flight training simulator. And the flight training simulator will be at the technical college. On the college campus, they will bring students, international students from all over the world, also domestic students from anywhere in the United States to live in the dormitories at the college. They have a engineering degree now at South Georgia State College. Dr. Sellers has worked it out so that students will be able to come to Coffee County, earn a bachelor's degree in engineering, and also be trained as a flight instructor or a pilot. And they could, they could work towards the pilot, and they could continue on working towards the flight instructor certificate. So, we will have a flight school where you can earn a bachelor's degree in engineering as well as flight instruction at South Georgia State College. And on the technical college side where we come in, we will house the flight simulator at the technical college where we have our Career Academy. And our Career Academy students will be able to take a pathway in flight that we are going to start this fall. Ms. Smith already has the curriculum, and we will have a flight pathway at Career Academy. And the flight simulator will be located on the technical college campus. And so, students in our schools will be able to take flight training as students in our, in our Career Academy, and also Coffee High students could be bussed over to be enrolled in the classes. So, the technical college side will also have the A and P program, the mechanic program. And so, students could also pursue, if they don't want to pursue flight training, they can pursue A and P mechanics training. And so, that's what this partnership will establish. It will partner all of us with the flight school who has all the licensing and who has all the F F A requirements to follow through with this. So, it's really exciting. And we think this could be one of the biggest things to happen in Coffee County in our lifetimes. Because from the E D A side, the economic development side, they are pursuing occupants for the industrial park that joins the airport. They have close to 100 acres that joins the airport. And if the right industry was interested, you could have an industry that locates to the land adjacent to the airport and have, let's say, a Gulfstream or some sort of airplane park manufacturer, airplane manufacturer, the right company came along. This could be ideal. We would be producing mechanics, we'd be producing pilots, and we could have an industrial park located at an airport. So, and this is the first step. So, we're asking y'all to approve this agreement tonight.
But from the school system standpoint, really, our only responsibility here is to provide pathways for our kids.
That's right.
To be able to get started in this and possibly take advantage of what they're doing at the high school.
And feed into the program. If you remember, when we established Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy, we established it as a multi-county school. And so, I've already talked with Jeff Davis, superintendent, and will be speaking with other superintendents. I've talked with the accident superintendent about students being allowed to come over and take, if they want to take the flight class at the Career Academy, then we'll accept students from other counties too to come in and be part of the program. So, we're looking for this to be a regional type program to feed into the college program and the technical college program. Now, we have already made application through the American Recovery Act. We have filled out the paperwork. Dr. Tucker has received the application that's signed by our state consultant that gives us the authority to purchase the flight simulator using our American Recovery Act funding. So, we are going to purchase the flight simulator. It will be part of Ms. Smith's program over at the Career Academy. And so, we will, we will commit to find the flight simulator. The funding's already been approved. We'll wait for final approval from the state. They've approved that one piece, but they have to approve the whole application. But they have approved that piece. So, that's our plan for what we will provide. And we're going to do an R F P later this month for a flight simulator. And we'll be coming back to the board, asking the board to approve the purchase of a flight simulator. And it'll be a pretty big number. It's not, not cheap equipment, but we do have the funding to be able to secure it.
I mean, I like it. I think we, I think sometimes in smaller communities like ours, these kids, when they are going to the high school and they're trying to figure out what they want to do after high school, it's almost like unless they're going to move off to a bigger town, there's a finite number of careers they can go into. I like it. I think it's, I think it's good. I think it gives us more options if the kids come out of school, what they can do. I like it. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure that our responsibility is as a school system, which to me looks like more benefit than anything.
Yes, sir. We, we talked about, Pam has been consulting with the Calheda County Career Academy, and they are one of the leaders in the state with this flight programming. And they already have a flight simulator, and they actually have one of their staff members, one of their teachers that's employed by the Board of Education there, who they sent through flight training and who now is providing flight instruction to teach, to students at their Career Academy. They actually got one of their teachers certified to be a flight instructor. And we've talked about doing that. If we can find the right teacher who was willing to go get trained to be a flight instructor, and we could actually have one of our own teachers who, maybe one block out of the day does flight instruction, or two blocks out of the day, or however it worked out. So, it's, it's exciting. Let's see. We're taking off? All right. If it meets the pleasure of the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda. All right, back to school plan. We have the back to school plan. We met with principals on Tuesday for about three hours. And a large part of that meeting was going over this plan. And we talked through our plan with our principals. And the plan is very similar to the way we started school back in August of 20. So very similar mitigations. We, we, we have kept most of the mitigations in place that we started school with last year. We have gone back from, from where we ended last year and, and gone back to where we started last year. So we will start with students returning to school and, uh, and I'll just kind of scroll through it if you want to scroll through it. We have the teaching and, and learning options. We have the traditional, which we hope that most of our students will come back face to face. And of course, we have a, a menu there for parents to pursue virtual. If they want to pursue virtual, they'll, they'll do that on their own. We're not going to be funding the virtual, except for through the Career Academy. If the students in grades nine through 12, and they want to do virtual, they could enroll in virtual through the Career Academy. We would really prefer that. If a grade nine through 12 student wants to do virtual, we would encourage them to pursue it with us through the Career Academy. And we can support virtual learning in grades nine through 12 through the Career Academy. But otherwise, they could go to the D O E clearinghouse there and find a program. Cleaning and hygiene, we're gonna stick with, with all those mitigations that we put in place. Clinics and student health, we're continuing with, with all those pieces that we put in place. Close contact exposure, identification. We're gonna keep our systems in place for reporting. We have the nurses trained to report the cases to the Department of Public Health. They'll continue to do that. The numbers that we've been posting, the reports that we've been doing. Logan has assured us that it's no problem for us since we have the systems in place. We'll continue reporting the cases just as we've been doing the weekly snapshot that you see. So we'll continue all those things. All of our systems that we put in place, we will keep. And we've actually already reignited those systems, if you will. So we, uh, we are, we are back in, in business and we will be managing everything just as we finish the school year. I think Miss Clayton dealt with her case today. So we'll be dealing with all those as they come up. The, the guidance has changed a little bit with the number of feet that students have to be separated by. It was six feet last year when all this started and it's gone to three feet now. So those, those things were changed in our plan when those guidance changed through the CDC and Department of Public Health. And, and once again, I will say with this group, just like we told our principals and directors on Tuesday, the CDC has their guidance and the Georgia Department of Public Health has their guidance. And we are following the Georgia Department of Public Health, which is based on the CDC. So when we have questions, we're going to the Georgia Department of Public Health. On Tuesday morning, before we met with principals and directors, I talked with the Department of Public Health representative and we talked through our plan and the mitigations that we have in place. And so we're on the same page with our local Department of Public Health officials. And our plan is our one stop shop for where we, we seek advice. So we will update our plan. Last year, Ms. Miller was the keeper of the plan. So when we met and we got new guidance from the Department of Public Health, we would meet as a team and we would talk about what the new guidance was. And then we would make changes. And this year, Dr. Tucker, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction will be the keeper of the plan. So if there is a change to the plan, it goes through her office and then it is posted out there for all of our, our administrators to see. So we will take, use the same procedures that we used last year for any changes that we make to our plan. But when people seek advice, any of our employees, and I would say any parents, any board members, if anybody wants to know how we're managing COVID, don't go straight to the CDC guidance. Because if y'all remember when all this started, their stuff got changed. There was one set of plans floating around out there, then another set of plans floating around out there. And, and there was a lot of confusion early on. So in order to manage all this, it helped us last year with us to have one place where we go, which is our plan. All right? And that's based on Georgia Department of Public Health, which is based there, it's on CDC. So.
The mask being mentioned?
Masks will be, we are stating that masks are recommended slash optional, all right, for all students and staff. So that's the way we started last school year. We started last school year with masks being recommended. And we're gonna start this year with masks being recommended. So unless something changes, that's, that's the way we'll start. But, you know, as you know, we're talking with Department of Public Health officials regularly. I just talked with them Tuesday. I told the hospital, uh, CEO yesterday. And we are setting up a vaccine clinic on Thursday of next week. We will offer vaccine to all students ages 12 and over. Can go to Coffey High School next Thursday to get vaccinated. And then on Friday, we're gonna have a vaccine clinic at George Washington Carver from eight to three. And any parent can take, any child 12 or older to George Washington Carver next Friday and get vaccinated. And the parent can get vaccinated too. So it's gonna be a school effort, community effort to vaccinate at Coffey High School on Thursday from eight to three, and then George Washington Carver on Friday from eight to three. So that's the approach we're taking with those pieces. Like I said, very similar to the way we started last year. The one thing we're not doing when we start this year, we won't be tempting every student when they get off the bus or get out of the car. In talking with the Department of Public Health officials, towards the end of the school year, the CDC said monitoring of that nature was not necessary. So, you know, as we went through this thing, what we learned was, we had very, very few, I don't know if any, that we caught with, with, by temping them. So it just appeared.
Either in the car.
Yeah. Just feared that tempting was not the way to, to, to go at it. So we won't be doing that piece. And the open houses, we're gonna do just like we did last year to limit the number of people in the elementary schools. We'll go on August 4th with last names of A through M. And August 5th, last names of N through Z. So once again, that's a mitigation that we started last year that we'll continue this year. Procedure for healthy schools, we're gonna, we're gonna keep our, our practice of if somebody's positive in the classroom, then that classroom will be evacuated and we'll bring in staff to clean that classroom and use the disinfectants and such before we send students back in the next day. They would be kept out of the classroom until it can be cleaned and, until the next day. Student enrollment, transportation, all those things are pretty much the same as last year. The daily home screening for students, we do ask that parents screen at home. Employees screen at home. The return to school guidance, the symptomatic and, and all that. We're going to continue our practices with, with, uh, if somebody's positive, we're gonna follow up the same practices we did last year. So we will, we will quarantine if there's close contact and they're not vaccinated and such as that. All right? Our staff has been well versed in that since all this started last year. We're comfortable continuing those. Now, I will say there are school districts who are saying they're not going to do those things. Cherokee County sent something out last week telling all their stakeholders, all their employees, they would not be quarantining anybody and they would not be doing those things. And that they were just going to follow their, their policy on, on diseases. And, uh, but I'm not in favor of taking that approach. I think our, our community has a lot of confidence in the way we managed it last year. We'll manage it the same way this year. We'll change if we need to change at certain points. As we all know, there is an uptick in cases. We started back the community huddle meeting with city and county officials and health officials on Fridays. We had our first community huddle meeting last Friday, it's the first one we've had in six months because things have just gotten better. But we've had, had an uptick in cases here locally and we're monitoring closely. And that's the way we'll move forward. All right? But I would encourage everybody to get vaccinated. I think it's, it's, it's a good thing to get vaccinated at this point. I do understand some people have religious reasons or whatnot or health reasons why they, they choose not to. But I do think our position officially is to encourage people to get vaccinated. Any other questions?
I just read through here, but I made the difference point is the last year, obviously, there are people who are vaccinated and they don't necessarily, exposure is not going to send them home if they get vaccinated.
That's right. If you're vaccinated, that, those exposure pieces are, are not.
And then all the other one I saw that's different was when you get sent home, exposure, it's not as long as it was last year. This one says seven to 10 days. If after five days you get checked or negative, you come back at seven. I guess if you don't get checked, it's 10.
We will do what our plan says.
Well, I'm reading that. That's what I'm saying. I'm reading it out of that.
That's all been vetted and based on what's.
Pretty much two weeks almost.
Yes, sir. All right.
I, I do have a question. It's on page eight. I think it's really, my question is, does that policy, well, say policy, the guides that we're using in regards to extracurricular participation by students, students enrolled in, uh,
Virtual.
Virtual. I mean, how's that translate with the Mosley Act?
The Mosley Act is homeschool. We've checked on that. Mosley Act is strictly homeschool. Yeah, when you do homeschool.
No, homeschool kids are online somewhere. They're, they're either, they might be.
I know, no, there's a difference. There's a difference. When you're enrolled in virtual school, you're enrolled through a Georgia-approved virtual school. If you're homeschool, you're doing a, you have to sign up as a homeschool student. So there is, there really is a difference in our folks in general.
What I mean, is there a physical difference? I, I know there's an institutional difference, but is there? We got a parent that's come down here and say, why are you treating these children differently? You're treating these children.
They could sign up for homeschool.
Doug Lees, as is right now, we get no money for homeschool students, right?
Yes, sir.
This student comes over and participates, has he got enrolled in school for one class?
They have to enroll when you apply the new homeschool rule. They do have to apply for one class and we're supposed to capture that funding for that one class. So they've gotta work the details on that. But we're supposed to get funding for that one class. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Next item on the agenda is the executive session. I would ask for an executive session to discuss the personnel, the hiring and employment of employees, teachers, staff with the school system, and then also the superintendent's evaluation.
Need a motion to exit to executive session.
Motion to exit to executive session. Ms. Block, the second by Mr. Wade. All in favor?
All right.
All right, need a motion to exit to executive session.
Motion to exit to executive session.
Ms. Block, the second by Mr. Wade. All in favor? Thank you. All right, at this time?